Good evening. I am the Chair of this Commission and we are called to order. Could I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Land.
Present.
Commissioner House.
Present.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Leitinger.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Orange is absent. Commissioner Oystash.
President.
We have a form.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. If everyone has had a chance to look at them, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting with any corrections.
Moved to approve the minutes.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections offered? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes from the regular meeting of Tuesday, March 25th are approved. Next item is approval of this evening's agenda.
Some move more.
Support Nash.
Moved and supported to approve this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Evening's agenda is approved. We go on to new business. We have one new case this evening. J-25-2824 PC Communication. The site plan review for a proposed automobile service station at 409 North Michigan Avenue. I'm going to read our introductory statement. Good evening, I'm the Chairman of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. When the petition looking for approval is called, please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the Secretary for the Record. After the appellate's presentation, others may comment. The meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions are made by the Commission and then forwarded to City Council. Are there any questions? Who is presenting this evening for petition J-252824?
Good evening, Chair and Saginaw Planning Commission. My name is Nathan Denha and I'll be presenting today on behalf of West Gen QOZB LLC as well as Acadian Development and Shaheen Development. Today I'm presenting the proposed redevelopment of 409 West Genesee Ave in Saginaw, Michigan. Currently on that site sits a former vacant Walgreens building which we are proposing to redevelop into a brand-new 7-Eleven Speedway prototype store. This store will feature a 4,853-square-foot building composed of CMU block as well as Nishihaw wood finishing. On this fuel station, there will be six pumps as well as 12 dispensers. Per Bob Goleens report, you will see that the site meets all B2 general business requirements such as setback requirements, parking, lighting, and landscape requirements per the city code. This new 7-Eleven prototype will be the second in the state of Michigan as there are only 20 in the United States. It features a very clean, attractive design, still compliant with the lighting and landscaping requirements per the city code. The development represents a reinvestment into a long vacant commercial corner as well as job creation and 24-hour convenience services. Lastly, it will be visually improved and accessible site supporting neighborhood revitalization. On behalf of Acadian Development and Shaheen Development, we respectfully request your approval of the site plan this evening so we can move forward with construction and permitting. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this petition? Please come forward.
Hold on.
No?
This isn't a, this isn't a public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a project review, so you can actually talk to him.
Okay. Any Commissioners with any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Clark.
Yes, a couple things. As an automobile service station, I don't believe this is going to be a repair station, automobile repair station, correct?
That's correct, it's not a repair station.
And secondly, I don't really see anything to reference the lighting as such, but I think the Commission has some concern about light pollution. Is that something that is included as far as having downward-facing lights, ones, kinds of lights that will not, will not increase the light pollution that we already have?
Yep, that's a great question. So yeah, we'll have downward-facing light as well as a light canopy. There'll be a photometric plan submitted that will show zero candlelight in through neighboring properties.
Well, I'm also referring to up, you know.
Yeah, so they have down, it's downward lighting with the canopy as well.
And that's the planning as well. Is that for all the lighting or just the canopy?
That's for all the lighting.
Alright, thank you.
So for prototypical stores, the purpose of downward lighting is to make sure the whole entire site is well lit, so the pumps are very visible as well.
In, in the documentation we've received, there's one that shows a prototypical site plan with building signage, but it has the drive in the middle where the Speedway fuel canopy is, but other portions have it off more further south. Which way will that, where, where will that drive be?
Can you tell us which sheet you're referencing?
This page right here is the one that shows it in the middle.
Yeah, that's a prototypical drawing. The actual site plan is presented.
Oh, that's, that's, okay, that's what I'm just trying to be sure of. I think otherwise it'd be far too close to the intersection.
Any other Commissioners? I have a question and perhaps this has been addressed in your application. As quote, your prototypical station, and you mentioned this is only the second one, are there capabilities or possibilities built into this site if there were changes in law about requiring electrical vehicle charging stations to it? I don't see that as part of the prototype plan, but...
That's, that's a great question. So, just for clarification, this would be the second in Michigan, but there are 20 throughout the United States. And Speedway 7-Eleven has basically in their plan for future use, if it sees that a EV station would be required, it would be added to the site. And that'd be at their sole discretion.
Okay. At, at present, there are no requirements about that.
That's, that's correct.
For this type of station. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, I do have another just clarification. On page, I'm not sure it has, Exhibit 2, it's numbered. It's the main one that shows the truck routes and so on. The corner, the southwest corner is depicted differently there than in other pictures as well. I'm assuming that the site plan, where it has, the one portion where it has two trees, I assume there, is the correct one? Or is it the one where it has sidewalks there? I guess I'm not sure. Just trying to verify what we're looking at.
So are these the two pages you're looking at?
Well, I'm looking at this one right here.
Yeah.
And the main one here.
Yeah, so those drives are the same.
They show, they show different.
No, they're, they're the same. So the truck, trucks are entering.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm talking to the corner of the, the southwest corner of the building. It's part of the pedestrian area, I believe, in between the, it looks in the one that you're going to have an island there at the corner, and then another one that looks a little different. And I just want to make sure that we know what it's going to be there.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So this was the landscape plan that was submitted to me after this was done? The, the architect was putting this in just to show the, the flow of traffic?
So it is believed that it'll be an island?
Is that correct?
Yes, it'd be green belt, yep.
Alright, thank you then.
Following on that question. It's unclear to me from the plans as I'm reading them, if there will be any trees in landscaping, will there be?
Yeah, so landscaping, the landscaping plan will be compliant to the B2 zoning. So all required trees, green belts, will all be a part of the plan. That's correct. And trees is, is one aspect of that landscape plan.
This neighborhood can use some trees.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I believe that the next thing we do is bring the petition up for approval?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Undertained, yeah?
With the conditions set forth.
Yes, there are two conditions listed. Flood plan permit and engineering approval.
Make a motion, we approve it with the necessary corrections to be made.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with the conditions to approve the site plan. Any discussion? Mr. Clark.
With all due respect to the petitioner, I, I, it seems to satisfy all requirements, so I, I don't think that you really should object to where it is, but I'm not very fond of the location, I'll be honest with you. It seems to be, I mean, it's, it's compatible with the zoning, but it just, something like this doesn't seem to fit at that intersection, so, I mean, it's obviously just a personal observation, but that's, with that in mind, I have nothing further to say.
Any other Commissioners?
I got a question.
Commissioner Moore.
In this, in this whole scheme of things, how many employees do you expect to have? You don't have a number yet?
That's, that's not an element of site plan review.
Okay, alright.
Anyone else? Alright, let us take a vote. All those in favor of approving petition J-252824 with the conditions of flood plan permit and engineering department review and approval of all utility connections, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The petition is approved. Next item of business is public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and address the Commission? The purpose of the public comment is to address your remarks to the Commission as a whole. Marks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the subject of their presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific Commission members. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. And your remarks should be limited to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. Anyone wish to come forward?
Hello. My name is Scott Nazinski and I've got over 43 years in the construction field, 13 as a carpenter, and over 30 right here with the City of Saginaw in code enforcement on inspections. And I'd just like to make some remarks on the tiny home. I'm not against tiny homes, but I am against them being placed in certain areas. They need to be in their own, their own area if you're going to have tiny homes. They shouldn't be placed between a 1,000-square-foot home and a 2,000-square-foot home on a vacant lot for a lot of reasons. And I've got a few notes here that I compiled. And just, just so you know, I've been doing code enforcement and building inspection for a long time. So what we have is an efficiency unit, which is usually attached to a big apartment building. And the minimum, minimum square feet for that is 150. And then you have to have 100 square feet for every additional occupant. Rooms used for sleeping purposes, for one occupant is 70 square feet, two occupants, it's 120 square feet. And 50 square feet for each additional occupant in that room. A minimum ceiling height of seven feet is required. No room dimension or walls shall be less than seven feet in any direction. The reason for some of these codes were at the turn of the century, we wanted to get people out of row-type living houses and blight-like conditions. And it's my opinion, we're going back to that if we're just going to let these go anywhere. And I, I don't think it's good for property values, surrounding property values, or, or the city. I don't think it's a direction the city wants to go. I think we want to, I take pride in the city, I live in the city, and, and I take, I was there when SCENIC was formed, which was to help fight blight. I was there when the SCENIC Neighborhood Recognition Award was formed to encourage people who take care of their properties that love the city and want to see it thrive. I don't want to see it go backwards. Natural lighting and ventilation, 10% of the floor area has to be for natural light. So a seven, a 10-by-7 room, 70 square feet, that 10% of that would be seven, seven square feet would be for natural lighting. Half of that for ventilation, which is 3.5. No wall from floor to ceiling that's within three feet of that window can be counted in that calculation. So I guess what I'm trying to describe here is a tiny house is pretty small, you're talking 200 square feet. To, to all this comply is going to be difficult. I know you see Tiny Home Nation and they show people living in lofts above, those are not code-compliant sleeping areas, they're less than seven feet in any direction. That's a fire hazard, it's a safety to people. You have to have a ingress window of 5.7 square feet, grade level, five square feet, man entry door has to be 36 inches. And another important feature is in Michigan, we live in a frost environment, the frost line is 42 inches. You start putting buildings with plumbing and everything else with no footing, you're going to, you're going to have problems. And, you know, research shows that when you put a tiny home in with other homes, is that it?
Yep.
Well, thank you, I hope.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't know if that's, we're good. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the Commission?
I wrote this and tried to, so I'll try to stay within three minutes, okay? My name is Beth Van Zumeren, and I've been a homeowner in the Northmore District, more specifically the Delaware Boulevard area, for 38 years. I'm here to voice my concerns regarding ADUs. I do not want them in residential 1 districts. Approximately one and a half years ago, a small group of neighbors and I got together to discuss concerns that we had regarding the increase of crime as well as the increase in blight in our neighborhood. After doing lengthy research, we learned that, that as rentals increased, so does the crime in the Northmore District. Blight appears to be connected and directly correlated to this as well. We also became aware of a way to cap the amount of rentals called rental restrictions overlays, but that's a topic for another day. I just want to inject here too that we are not insensitive as this group of people that have done research on this, nor the people that signed a petition from our neighborhood to support us. We understand the needs of housing across our nation, most specifically within the City of Saginaw, but we want to balance those needs with keeping our residential neighborhoods safe and visually pleasing. In speaking with a city staff member about a year and a half ago, we learned that the whole ordinance rewrite was going to occur, so we felt that this possibly was a perfect time to get a rental overlay language within the ordinance. Hence, we began to attend open houses, we began to share a desire for rental restriction language, we wrote comments on the input boards that, what, our consultant head, thank you, thank you so much, Bob. We filled out surveys, and we really shared our non-support of ADUs within residential neighborhoods. Additionally, we individually met and shared our research and data and ideas with members from city staff, planning commission, and city council, and we felt that they all had positive feedback. I'm going to now fast-forward to the recent Planning Commission meetings where the proposed language ordinance was shared. We quickly understood that there was not going to be a rental restriction overlay within this ordinance, and that ADUs were going to be added to residential 1 neighborhoods. Hence, they're increasing the residential population or potential to increase the rental population versus looking at a way to manage, manage it. Shocked to say, we were. My concerns revolve around who's going to effectively manage and monitor the ADUs. I currently see the city struggling with effective management of what they currently have on books, and I want to be, I'm not meaning to throw anybody under the bus here, but just, just some examples of what I've seen with even neighbors that I, that, that have shared with me. Like I have a neighbor that has reported ordinance infractions, and it has been years for them to basically have someone follow up on them. They're either ignored or inadequately responded to. We have many addresses in our Northmore District that are rentals but are not reported as such to the city. The city said that they are aware of that, but they don't have the manpower to follow up on these. I've also suggested a way to make our Crime Free Lease Addendum much more effective. I was told, good idea, but who in the world's going to follow up on that and support that and basically manage that? So my question would be...
That is time. Can I do?
You can finish your thought. Okay, thank you. So my question would be, how would I, how would the people on the subcommittee, and how would my neighbors have any faith and any trust that ADUs would be implemented in any way that it's more effective than our current rentals are or that the ordinance infractions are within the city? The bottom line is, from the research that we have done, as rentals increase, so does crime and blight. I do not want the addition of ADUs in residential 1 neighborhoods. Please, please, please protect our R1s, thus protecting our quality of life and the original character of the neighborhoods that we purchased our homes in. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Commission? Anyone else wish to come forward and address the Commission this evening? Last call, anyone wish to speak in front of the Commission today? That closes the public comment period. We will now move to old business. We have one item this evening, our final review of the proposed zoning ordinance. Mr. Goleyn, will you be starting with Kiffles or yourself?
Yeah, so just, this recognizes that you gave us the directive to look into instituting tiny homes within the zoning ordinance. There's a couple of things that I need to point out as to why we have not come up with sufficient language as of yet. Number one is, it's a very complicated issue and it affects many portions of the zoning ordinance to begin with. Secondly, in terms of funding for us to support having a consultant work on rewriting the zoning ordinance, we received a grant from the State of Michigan, and we need to, we have to hit some benchmarks in order to get that, that funding, and one of which is, is this, this public hearing that we would have to have for that. And then finally, as indicated, this is a very, the document is a living document, we can, I'm, I'm recommending that we approve the current zoning ordinance with the, with the changes that we're going to be talking about this evening. Hold a public hearing at the next meeting in May, and then recommend to the city council that they adopt this zoning ordinance. And then we can start working on any amendments that we need to do following that. But it's going to take several times. As you recall, when we did, for example, the short-term rentals, it took three or four meetings just to get through all of that. And so, we just need more time to work on that. So with that, Andy is going to go through some of the proposed change, language changes and typo corrections and things of that nature.
Thank you, Bob. Andy?
Can I just say something before we get started? I'm glad that you brought up the tiny home, because I know, I kind of, I went with the vote the last time, but after the last meeting, my research in some of the Michigan building codes, you have to have 600 square feet to put it on a foundation. So, I agree with the gentleman that spoke tonight. That's where I'm going to sit on that as we go into this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Andy, go ahead.
Alright, good evening, Planning Commission. Andy Amat here with Kiffles Webster. Happy to talk through the changes that occurred from last meeting, March 25th, to now, today's meeting. So, just reminding you where we're at, we're trying to make some of these final revisions, make this a 100% complete document and get it ready for the eventual public hearing. Just for anybody in the audience, if anybody wants to just, let's just take maybe 30 seconds, anybody could snap a little QR code that brings us to the project webpage, which is also linked on the City of Saginaw's, you know, pub, the, the City of Saginaw's webpage and whatnot. From that webpage, you'll see a link to the draft zoning map as well as the draft zoning ordinance. So you'll see both of those. Let's give you 10, 20 seconds here, let everybody capture this. I will move on to the next slide here. So just covering these recent changes, we revised definitions for mostly, what were mostly use-related definitions. We revised the definition, one of them was for boarding house. We really wanted to make sure boarding houses and rooming houses were a little bit more, there, there was a distinct difference between the two. We also revised the definition for dwelling to ensure that, to ensure that dwellings, there's a, there's a correlate, or not a correlation, but there's a relationship between a dwelling unit and a single family. So, I'm not just talking about single-family dwelling use, dwelling units, but a single dwelling unit shall be occupied by a single family as defined by the chapter. That means that, you know, a, a single family can occupy a multi-unit dwelling, or a dwelling that's part of a multi-unit apartment building. So just to make that one-to-one relationship clear, that a dwelling is to be occupied by what's defined in the ordinance by a family. I'll get to the definition of a family, we did revise that a little bit too, to make it more, I think, appropriate to 2025. And, but we did also revise the definition for dwelling detached single-family. The change there was that we stated a detached single-family dwelling, detached dwelling does not include a mobile home or manufactured home, but it may include a modular home. So that was the big difference, that was the big addition we made there with detached single-family dwelling. Accessory dwelling unit, we also made a couple small revisions. I don't think any of those were, were very substantive to the definition, but we did want to make clear that this is a dwelling unit that I just went over a minute ago that's situated on the same lot as a principal single-family dwelling unit. The definition of family, we revised. So, we gave a few choice, there, there's a few options of really what constitutes a family in our draft. One can be related individuals that are related by blood, marriage, adoption, legally established relationships such as guardianship or foster care, plus no more than two unrelated roomers or guests who may reside in this single dwelling unit as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit. The other option is that a family could be a collective number of no more than six unrelated individuals whose relationship is of a permanent and distinct domestic character who reside in a single dwelling unit and live as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit with single culinary facilities. And then we also specify that a family does not include kind of the group living situations, rooming houses, boarding houses, or just temporary seasonal living arrangements. So that was what we did with the family. We previously family, there was not a, a cap of number of individuals.
I've got it just real quick, if I may. It's supposed to be a typo in, under the dwelling detached family, single family, the second line, for occupancy by occupied?
Yeah, okay, designed for occupancy, yep. Yep, we will erase occupied, it's a redundancy. But anything on family, so I think so far, just stopping here, actually, let's stop at group residence because that's a good stopping point. That's kind of got a relation, a relation to what we're doing here. For group residence, we wanted to make clear that group residences are residences that are, that are located within a building that may be designed as a single-family dwelling unit, but it's of a group of persons who does not constitute a family and who are of a non-transient basis. So those could be things like fraternity, sororities, convents, religious homes, people, sober living homes. But these are not boarding houses, rooming houses, or places where treatment is given to somebody for substance abuse treatment. And these do not include AFC homes. So really, I, I think this is a good stopping point. We did go through some of these definitions just to draw a better distinction between what these things mean rather than have perhaps interpretation challenges. Because I think sometimes people see something like group residence or boarding house and they don't actually read the fine print of what these places, you know, how these places are made up.
I have a further comment. If family means either of the following, you haven't defined which of the A, B, or C the either is referring to. It seems to be you probably should be referring to A and B because C is a negative. It's what you can't be.
Yeah, I guess we-
Otherwise, someone would think that C would be part of the choice, but it isn't. It clearly isn't.
Well, it says a family should not, shall not include-
Right, which I agree.
Yeah.
But the real choice is between A or B.
Yeah, the real choice is between A or B. We can work on that with-
It just avoids-
City Attorney Law.
Clears it up as well.
Yep. We do have an or there as well for, from one to two.
Well, actually, it was taken out according to mine.
Oh, really? Interesting. We'll, we'll work on City Attorney, with that, with City Attorney Law to make sure we have a clear, you know, one or two and then what it's not.
Yep.
Any questions about kind of the content of what was provided? Okay, I'll keep going. So kennel, we defined kennel to make it clear that kennels and pet, daily pet boarding facilities are two different terms and where these places are permitted. So, we just, we made a decision, we made an interpretation that kennels are going to be a little bit more intensive. But the pet boarding facilities, the doggy daycares that people want to drop a dog off at for daycare, those are a little bit, those are two different uses. So kennels can be something that involves breeding, dog runs, they can involve overnight stays. But a, a doggy daycare is more of the daily, you know, drop-in, drop-off and pick-up kind of commercial use.
Andy, excuse me, I've, I've lost track of where you are.
Oh, kennel, yep.
That's not in our document.
Our packet doesn't have kennel.
Oh, it doesn't?
Got that. Just what you're referencing is on the screen.
Let me-
It's okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't lost.
Yeah, got it. Oh, I see what you, so you sent, yeah, this, this is what was sent to the, okay.
Maybe you could just real briefly say that again because we were looking for the page.
Yeah, let me, let me just read what kennel, how kennel is defined. So we define kennel as any lot or premises on which dogs or household pets are kept for any commercial purpose other than daily boarding services. This definition includes but is not limited to overnight boarding, breeding, training, and includes any associated indoor or outdoor dog runs. We then differentiate that from pet boarding. So pet boarding is defined as a facility where household pets are boarded throughout the day but not boarded overnight. Overnight boarding meets the definition of kennel. Kennels are going to be a little bit more intensive and reserved for maybe the more, maybe like an I-1 industrial, low-intensity industrial district. Whereas the doggy daycares can be in like B-2, for example, like more of a commercial business district.
Mr. Moore?
So, I guess I'm so lost. Is that part of the changes where we wanted him to define everything?
Those, those are the-
That's in the question.
Those are the changes that we went through where we had to define some of these, these items that came up.
It just wasn't-
Because, because, for example, I looked at it and thought, well, I, I don't want to have a kennel near a residential district. Those should be in industrial areas. But we could potentially have like these dog daycares or whatever that seem to be popping up, you know.
I do, I do get what Bren is saying. I mean, I don't know that we need to go through every line of every definition. If we, if you guys want us to, we can, but we can talk about some of the other, you know, overall arching themes also.
And that's, that's a good point. I mean, I don't think the kennels and, versus pet boarding is going to have a completely huge impact on how your land use development occurs in the city.
And that might have just been something that came from staff. But some of these typos and reorganizing came also from other comments from commissioners and stuff.
Mr. Chair?
My comment would be-
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I am fine with not going through it line by line as long as we've already had the chance to review that portion. The kennel we did.
Yeah.
If there's others that you had that were any kind of significant-
It is in the draft zoning ordinance that I believe is posted to the internet.
But I understand if it wasn't in the, the markup.
But you've covered it adequately as far as I'm concerned.
So I think, I think the only other one that maybe wasn't in that markup was maybe the place of assembly. So we did divide out place, we, we have really two, two places of assembly in, in a way. So we, we define the literal place of assembly to be a place where the public is assembled regularly or occasionally, including but not limited to conference centers, auditoriums, theaters, arenas and stadiums. So these would be places like Temple Theater downtown, Dow Event Center downtown. But then we also define private clubs, which a private club is going to be more of a private events center, private event venue, like a wedding venue, banquet hall, VFW, Alex Lodge, you know, some of these private clubs.
Saginaw Club.
Saginaw Club. Or, or even a, like I said, a, a wedding venue. So a place for rentals, a banquet hall for rentals. So, we did split those out because we think that there's kind of a, one of them is a bit higher intensity. The, the assembly, the place of assembly, it's a place where huge events could be taking place. But a private club could be a place that, you know, there might be 25 people at a small event. We also, I'll get to it when we get to the district changes. We have a little bit of a, kind of a decision that should be made on if private clubs should be permitted in your downtown ground floor, which I think is a-
Saginaw Club is.
Yeah, because Saginaw Club is. So just a, we'll get to that in the slide. But those, those are the big differences between places of assembly and private clubs. Any questions there on why we divided that out? They've been two separate uses in the, in the zoning ordinance since the last draft. It's just we wanted to make sure the distinction of what differentiates the two is a little bit more clear.
I have a, a question about the family definition. Sorry to hold back. I'm trying to figure out why we're defining, I get a little itchy when people define family. And I'm trying to figure out why specifically we're defining family. And I think it's because of single family.
Yeah, it's because of, a family is what you've defined, is what the zoning ordinance defines, a household unit. It could be called a household unit, really, truly. But it, it's really the household unit that occupies a single dwelling unit.
Okay, so in the family definition part B, we're approximately banning houses that might contain seven roommates?
Essentially, a, a place that has seven roommates could be a group residence. If they're of a group of residents that has lived together on a non-transient basis. Which is a, just a separate use category than a single-family dwelling unit, a multiple-family dwelling unit, a duplex dwelling unit, a attached single-family dwelling unit. So.
I believe six is a commonly used number because it is relatively large. It's unusual for a house, you know, I mean, unless you have two people in each bedroom, I guess.
Yep, and six-
You have to have six different bedrooms.
Six is where a lot of lines are drawn in, in the Adult Foster Care Licensing Act as well, where your adult foster care facilities of six or less people are exempt from local zoning. But then seven to 12 is its own category, and then 13 on up is another category too. So in terms of enforcement, in terms of enforcement, it's really hard to try to regulate what a family is. It really is, it's a, it's kind of a, it's a sensitive subject, truly. But, but the number-
But it is commonly defined by-
Yes.
Most zoning ordinance.
Yeah, and most, essentially every zoning ordinance I've ever read has a definition for family or household unit that is to be occupying a dwelling unit. I would say six is, is, is actually rather lenient. I, I've seen a lot of ordinances that even cabinet three or four unrelated rumors. And I think that is very overly strict. I think that that can affect a lot of people in their living arrangement in being able to, you know, afford housing. So.
I, I would think it also has the practical application of six unrelated adults overtaxes the capacity for parking and other requirements in the code.
Yep, and we do, and, and that's a good point. We have a threshold for, we do have parking, required parking for group residences. So, really, we, we've deemed, you know, essentially, one to six-person household units occupying a single-family dwelling unit. You're right, do not have to provide a formal parking lot. They can just park in a driveway. But then a group residence needs to build a parking lot to accommodate their required parking. So that's another way we draw the line too, is, is in terms of parking. There is a difference from the, the family to group residence. Boarding houses and rooming houses are also places that may house more than six unrelated individuals in terms of by renting a room from perhaps the boarding house manager, who, the boarding house manager needs to live on the premises, or a rooming house manager who might not live on the premises. So, those are other instances where you can get more than six unrelated individuals in one, what we would all observe as, as a typical house or dwelling unit.
Commissioner Clark?
That, that sort of does tweak my interest on the question of how do you manage the parking for those situations, the boarding house or the six unrelated-
Those, they're required to have parking lots.
It's in the parking standards.
But I, even though, but they might, but what about the family that's made up of six unrelated individuals? You might have six cars and one parking lot, or one driveway that holds two people, or two cars. I mean, is there anything done to address that? Because that, that becomes a blight if you run off the bat, or a problem right off the bat if that's not addressed in the zoning ordinance.
That, we can't regulate that same way. We can't regulate that you can't have two parents and four kids living in the house who end up having cars.
Yeah.
Well, generally, you don't have all of them having cars. I mean, older, older kids, I suppose, but it becomes, it still becomes a question of if you're doing the zoning and you're allowing up to six.
It's an issue all over the city, the amount of cars that people have in short driveways because we had smaller garages, shorter driveways. It, it is an issue, but it's an individual's responsibility to take care of-
Then it becomes an enforcement issue as well.
You know, I don't know.
I mean, it's defined in the, the parking standard, so I think, you know, that's not-
Yeah, you can't park in the front yard in a grass area. And you, you, you know, it's got to be on a driveway that complies with the ordinance. I mean, I think you got to draw the line somewhere where you allow people to have affordable housing and a place to live or you have, you know, some, you know, concerns about over-parking and whatnot. And I think what we did was we tried to give people the opportunity to live in a one to six occupant household unit. Because I think Cassie made a good point, is that you're, you're not regulating six cars if, if they are a married man and woman family with four kids.
And there are, you know, there are other things, we do work with other people to get some curb cutouts and things like that when we can.
But these are really good questions. This is part of the cleanup that we just did, is we've, we've, in our opinion, we've drawn more clear categories of, you know, where these different living situations fall in the ordinance so that Bob and Cassie can regulate them accordingly.
Okay. Continue, I guess.
I, honestly, I think that was it for the definitions. We did coin-operated laundry as well as a request from the, the commission from last meeting. So here's the changes where uses were permitted from that last meeting. So we did, as a staff, or myself and staff, we decided that food stores should be, of a small scale, should be permitted uses in the industrial district, districts. That allows people the opportunity to grab lunch during their work break or right after dinner. So we wanted to make sure that that was allowed. And that being said, they are capped at 15,000 square foot only. That way you are encouraging the larger-scale grocery stores to take place and be built in neighborhoods that serve, you know, a direct residential population. Laundry, coin-operated, so coin-operated laundry, we carved out the zoning districts where those should be allowed. Libraries, we made that, we made those special, permitted by special use in the R1 and R2 zones and substance abuse treatment facilities, kind of on the same line with some of the dwelling changes. We did decide that, you know, there, there should be a clear definition for substance abuse treatment facilities and those should be allocated to zoning districts. And those are state-regulated. So recent changes we made just with city staff, actually, in, right around Friday when we, or right around Monday when we published the information for your packet, was this place of assembly and private club direction. So, because places of assembly are going to be a lot bigger venues, we are not, we are no longer permitting them in MU1. MU1 is a bit too residential, in our opinion, for a large theater or stadium or performance venue. But then it made sense to us to put private clubs there, smaller clubs. You know, VFW and whatnot could be allowed as, from a, as a special land use. So after approval by you in the MU1 area. The place where I have question marks is the private club in MU3, the downtown and old town districts on the primary ground floor. I think from everybody's recommendation, it sounds like we want to make that a special or permitted use because Saginaw Club is one of those, you know, fits that bill as a primary, primary street ground floor use. We just wanted to check with you all to make sure that that's okay. There are, you know, you want to make sure your downtowns are activated. There is the ability for private clubs to maybe have some time of closure, not necessarily out of business, but just off-hours that are not super, you know, conducive for a walkable district. However, these are places that could do a lot of good community, you know, could do a great deal of community benefit when they are open and they are active and they are, you know, places where people are accessing. So what do you feel about private clubs being permitted on the ground floor in your downtown? So what do you feel about private clubs being permitted on the ground floor in your downtown and old town? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Okay. As a permitted use or special land use? Special? Is your right?
Special might be useful just because of proximity to another one that exists, or-
And hours of operation.
And also, what kind of, what kind of club is going to be?
Yeah, like alcohol or, you know, yeah. Liquor, yeah, okay. So special land use is the direction there, that's helpful. All right, going over some of the small little dimensional changes. So so far, we did change the minimum front in-depth of the R1 and R2 districts of the buildings, so single-family homes, for example, to be twenty feet. So that is reflected here, minimum twenty feet front in-depth. That was twenty-six, and the math just didn't add up. That produces a bigger house than six hundred square feet, so that doesn't really make much sense. So that's why we changed that to a lower value that is fitting. Fits, you know, it doesn't, obviously, if you go by twenty by twenty, you're still not building a house big enough. That would be only four hundred square foot. But at least this gives, you know, you would need to meet the twenty as a minimum. So you could do twenty and thirty. We also clarified that the, there's a minimum floor per dwelling unit in R3, B1, MU1, MU2, MU3, and MU4 to now require that six hundred square foot for single-family dwellings. Before that, we just had the multiple-unit dwelling per-bedroom standards. So that makes it clear that single-family house, houses still need to be that size in these districts. And that's as of today, or as of the date that this is adopted. We worked on parking setbacks, so this came with the riverfront standards, the riverfront orientation standards, we were trying to kind of nail in. So we changed the, the main standard is at this bottom box. The rear or side-facing street yard parking setback needs to be thirty feet and needs to comply with the street frontage requirements, meaning trees and shrubs need to be planted in that thirty-foot greenbelt. I'm going to show you a few little, a few little diagrams on what that might look like. So if you're on Water Street, we want to make sure that the building is facing the river. That's the approach that, you know, we all, I believe we all agreed on. The parking on this, in this situation, because it's a double-fronted street that also has a side-street frontage, you would need to build that thirty-foot buffer here along the street-fronting side-street and the rear-fronting front, you know, rear-street. So that would be a thirty-foot buffer here. Obviously, you can put a driveway in to lead to the parking. You just can't have the parking lot itself be thirty feet from those streets. So that's a riverfront example of how you might see a building, you know, face, on Water Street, facing, on the east side of Water Street, you know, facing the river, if it has double-frontage or side-street frontage. And then here's an example of where a double-frontage lot, what a double-frontage lot might look like in your downtown more that's not fronting the river. Where we're allowing the parking, obviously, the parking needs to take place behind the building. But if it's double-frontage, it might, you know, also, a secondary street like Franklin, you would need a thirty-foot greenbelt frontage here that's landscaping. So it is, it's, so it's at least got an aesthetic appeal to it, even though the parking itself might be a little uglier than a beautiful building being built there. Any questions about this?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, great. So we made some change, some really minor changes to Article 4, the use standards. We just made sure that, so we had standards written for single-family and two-family dwellings in terms of, some of those were aesthetic-based. Some of those were architecturally, you know, there's some architectural compatibility standards. The requirement that they be on a permanent foundation in compliance with the most recent Michigan Building Code. So we just wanted to make sure that those standards were also included for the triplexes and quadplexes that, you know, might look like a, we're trying to be flexible with the triplexes and quadplexes in some of those, you know, MU1 and MU2 zones. And we just wanted to make sure that these are places that are going to be truly compatible with duplexes and with single-family dwellings. So we just wanted to make sure that standards were consistent from single-family up to four-family quadplexes. We added the use standards for coin-operated laundry, which was a recent request from the planning commission at last meeting. And then we just wanted to make clear that the vehicle repair stations and vehicle service station use standards then are also replicated for vehicle fueling stations. So under those repair and service umbrellas, we also include the standards for vehicle fueling. Make sure gas stations are regulated with, you know, those design standards. Any questions on these three changes?
Just, if I may, I mean, just like fueling stations, I hope that would include electric fueling stations.
So that's a good point. You do have parking standards that regulate how electric vehicle fueling stations are built. But if you're talking about like a principal-use EV charging station-
Someone may want to-
We could, in that definition of a fueling station, just say fueling stations shall also include an EV vehicle, a principal-use EV vehicle charging station.
You might even want to consider having hydrogen, because eventually that may become, I mean, just fueling stations, you'd auto-candidate the future.
We could, yeah, we can, I think it's-
You can't anticipate what the future is going to be, and I understand what you're saying, but if-
It doesn't hurt anything to put it again.
They're going to change technology over and over and over again, so if we keep-
Commissioner Ostacek, then Commissioner Moore.
So this, as an electric vehicle owner, fully-electric, I mean, I have been at stations where gas pumps are available and then just off to the side, they would install an electric charging station. And I think that works very well, because the store at that point is still serviced for soda or snacks or whatever. And then usually, by the time you're done doing that, or even a restroom break, the car is done, so then you can take off, so.
But you're, are you suggesting that we require them to be installed?
No.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
No, just so that if, let's say-
I thought we had that in here.
Is that in there?
We have standards for what these places look, what parking spaces. Like, let's say you're in a McDonald's parking lot. McDonald's wants to put EV chargers in. We have standards for how those are constructed. You have to put the adequate signage up. You have to, you know, make sure that there's enough space, you know, in between the infrastructure and the public sidewalk, or private property, public sidewalk. We do have standards that do accommodate for how these are built in.
Okay, so we're covering that.
But-
Well, if I made my comment, simply if you're making language specifically for service stations, one's a standalone, put in other possibilities, because you might as well have it while you're doing it.
It's covered under the parking standards.
Okay, if it is, that's a good-
Yep.
Commissioner Moore?
Two thumbs up.
Help me understand. This is all a work in progress. All of this can change. This is not edge-in-stone, and I think that's the point that we all need to remember. I keep hearing about different stuff, we steady add. We got to have, we got to have a base to start with. And the base to start with is where we should start. We don't need to keep going over how many family members could stay in the house. I guess for me, when I came up, it was five of us, and a mom and a daddy. So that meant what, you're going to put me out of my house? I guess I'm trying to figure out. You know, you're giving me these numbers, and you're saying all of this. At the end of the day, the whole idea was to make it better. Okay, nobody really wanted to make it, and this is tough, this is tough stuff to do. Because we only get bits and pieces of what people want. So I personally, I'm ready to move forward because it is a work in progress. And what we're going to end up doing is, we're going to end up doing like we so many times do, don't do. There were some questions and concerns, and I want to address them eventually with the young lady that spoke. The citizens tell us what they want. We don't tell them what we want. We tell, we ask them, and when you ask them, we need to start taking their information into consideration before we sit up and do thirty, forty, fifty meetings, and still, they get nothing. Because at the end of the day, I don't know who out there voted for me, but you voted for me. You thought I could do a good job. So therefore, that means I've got to do my due diligence when it comes to making sure that the citizens understand this is a work in progress. None of this stuff is edge-in-stone. Nobody can jump up and say, it's this, it's going to be like this. None of us can do that. You guys, you will be telling us what you can do. And I just needed to get that off, because I'm like, I'm steady listening to all of these definitions, all of these changes, and at the end of the day, from day one, I was told, this is just like the master plan. It's a work in progress. So stuff is bound to change. I know Commissioner Clark asked about all of this stuff in the future. We may not be here in the future. I'm living right now, and right now, we need to be trying to move on so that we can begin to start to rebuild our city. If tiny houses are not in the picture, that's not going to hurt nobody. It's not going to hurt, what's going to hurt is we continue to have sessions and sessions and sessions, and we come up with no answers. So I just wanted to say that, Chair, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, because at the end of the evening, we will have finished our review of this. In our next meeting, we'll have the public hearing about recommending this to the council. And as the elected official, you will get a chance to-
You got to, right? You might as well start with me now.
Anything else from our consultant, are we?
Yeah, I, we did just a couple changes to Article 5, but I don't think that they are game-changing. The one thing was that we just clarified for parking, so the driveway, the driveway leniency that I discussed earlier, the, and we verbalize this to you at all of our meetings, that you're not required to build an engineered parking lot with maneuvering lane spaces and twenty, yeah, twenty-two-foot maneuvering lanes with formal striped parking spaces in, for a triplex or a quadplex. That can be done on a driveway. That's similar to a single-family home. So we just wanted to make sure that that was clear here. We just had a typo that said fewer than four units, but now we're saying four or fewer units. I think that's all for this presentation. I do want to, I do want to just echo the mayor's comments, too, is that it's a very normal thing for a planning commission to take up, you know, three to four zoning amendments a year that, you know, craft policy in a way that is more fitting with moving forward and current times. So we want to give you a base, good start, and allow you to move forward at your own pace throughout, throughout time.
Thank you very much. At this time, I think we've actually got all the work we're going to have from staff and the consultants. So we don't have an action item to do tonight. We need the public hearing, and then we will be voting on a recommendation through the council. Commissioner Clark?
Point of order, I do think that we have to take some kind of action. There was a prior motion that required the proposed zoning ordinance to include language within the proposed zoning ordinance to permit tiny houses. That's there. The recommendation is to not do that. My suggestion is we need to address that if we want to follow that recommendation. And I'm not against doing that. But I think that would take a motion to, because it's on the, it's what's required right now. So since I made the original motion, I will move to set the tiny house issue aside to be brought back in the future by staff for, with recommendations that we can address as a commission, one way or the other, and at least address it, whether that's as amendment or to not do anything with it, but to actually get it off the table now, so we can move forward with what we have in front of us.
I believe the proper motion would be a motion to rescind.
It's fine, as long as it's, otherwise, you still have a problem. So I would move to rescind the prior motion and with request, it'd be brought back.
I second it.
I'm going to ask our council if we add something to it that's not really a motion to rescind, then, is it?
Correct. I think it's just a motion to rescind, and I think staff has received the message that it will be brought back later.
In the midst of us revising.
Commissioner Clark, is that acceptable to, a straight motion to rescind?
That's, that's it.
And Commissioner Moore, are you the second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to rescind our previous request for language concerning tiny houses to be included in the final proposed zoning ordinance, which will go to the public hearing next week, or next meeting, excuse me. Any other comment from commissioners? Commissioner-
Not on the motion.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of the motion to rescind?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have one nay, couldn't we have a roll call vote, please?
I think we caught who it was.
Commissioner Bland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faust?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Whitinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Mellon?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Nope.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I haven't ducked out.
Sorry, my apologies.
The motion is carried to rescind our previous request. With that, again, I think we don't have an action item on the final ordinance. Then it will be prepared for a public hearing in our next regular meeting.
Continue discussion. Do you have any other discussion over?
I have a question.
Okay.
When can we expect to receive, so right now, we have a document in like a bunch of pieces and revisions. And I think I need to, a full revised version, at least two weeks in advance, to be able to review. Is that possible? What's the process from here?
So I think we're close to being ready to submit that. So then that would be posted on our, on that zoning ordinance rewrite webpage for you to review.
Can we get notice when it's ready for us to review, at least two weeks in advance?
Yeah, so the full zoning ordinance needs to actually be on hand at the city online and on the website, and to an interested person that may be coming to your front desk when that public hearing notice is posted. So that's fifteen days ahead of the planning commission meeting, so.
Sounds right.
I guess while I, while we have you here, though, anything else in terms of material you would like to see? Because I just want to make sure that we are giving you every opportunity you need to kind of understand all of the zoning implications at hand. I mean, yep.
So in the, matter of fact, one of the things I saw was the lighting changes that you put in for residential. So thank you, that, really appreciate that.
That defined the intensity of the light and that sort of thing, rather than, say, we're requiring you to have LEDs. Because that technology will change, too.
And the covers and such, so that it protects the neighbor next door, in case, because some of the homes are actually turned. because some of the homes are actually turned, turned sideways because of the size of the lot. The other part that we had talked about in the past, too, I just drew a complete blank. Um, we talked about lighting. I'll come back, I'll think about it.
Mr. Moore.
I just need to ask the question. So, I know that we're making a lot of changes with the zoning. Once again, I'm asking this question. Are people who are already established gonna be allowed time to get up to these new zoning codes, or are they being grandfathered in?
Well, most of the zoning ordinances have to do with anything new that happens.
I just want to ask. And we, we need to make that clear so that people don't, a lot of people don't want a lot of changes because they feel like they've got to change. And if you don't say it out loud, then how would they know the difference? So you answered my question, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I also want to add that a big part of this was a term called right zoning. So we, we have a lot of areas that are zoned for things that are not there, like we have manufacturing-zoned areas that are all residential. We had quite a bit of some different intensities around some of the corridors, and so we took time to look at what was actually there and then match what is there with the zoning district for a lot of the city.
That's fine. Once again, we're transparent. We're letting people know, you don't have to change your life for us, but this is what we're doing moving forward. That's all I'm saying. Moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
I can deal with that. I can't deal with you coming back telling me your lighting is poor. You got five days to get it together.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. Zoning protects people in that manner where zoning has non-conformities, where you're allowed to just be, exist as is, and you're not compelled to change your property.
Okay, so.
Yep, yep, exactly.
You just said the word.
Yep.
I'm not compelled to change my property.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I, I, I too, uh, appreciate the changes regarding the lighting that you did make. But one of the things that was raised before was the question of, of light pollution. Was there an overarching portion addressed in the revisions that included that issue?
So the one thing you could do is, let's see here. Yeah, so sites undergoing development or redevelopment, so that could be somebody who's applying for site plan review or something, change of use to a, to a new use that undergoes maybe administrative site plan review by Bob or site plan review by you. Um, they would be required to put a shield on a light fixture to make sure that the light fixture is full cutoff, meaning the light goes down and not up.
And that's in there now, you're saying?
Yep, and that's, that's in the proposed zoning ordinance.
That's what I was.
It's an overarching.
Site plan review, we usually require like a photometric plan, which was discussed this evening. They, they provide that to us.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Ostache.
I remember.
I was missing some of these.
Didn't think about it for a second. Um, we had also talked about specifically in the R1, R2 districts about the multi-unit homes, so like if you, if you wanted to take a house and turn it into two apartments, that would be a special use and not a permitted. Did, do you know if that change was made as well?
So the way.
I don't have that. I, I still have the old grid.
That was before last meeting. So what we did do is we increased the minimum lot size needed to change a, uh, single fam, a single-unit dwelling to a, uh, three-to-four-unit dwelling, up to seventy-two hundred square feet. So we are requiring a minimum lot area. I believe the direction from staff was that you don't make a, that a special land use because you're opening yourself up to discretion in an instance where, um, I mean, you have to cite thing. I just don't believe that, that direction was to make it a special, staff, does somebody want to?
There, there wasn't a motion.
There wasn't a.
There was, there was a comment made by one or maybe two commissioners, but there was no consensus or motion on that topic.
So did you something to address your concerns? We upped the minimum lot area to seventy-two hundred square foot of minimum lot size.
Okay.
To add, to do a three- or four-unit dwelling. Whereas in the, in the, in that district, the minimum for a single-family house would be four thousand square foot lot area. So we did up that to just make sure that there's enough size on the lot to perhaps add room for a driveway if the, at the owner's wish.
One, a part of the discussion, too, was around requiring parking for, uh, more than four units.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that would avoid, um, a lot of the bigger houses that would be divided into more than that.
Yeah, because, yeah, I was just trying to stay with the, what we've done in the past where we rezoned the west side and the east side because of that actual issue that was happening.
Yeah, so in a single-family, we don't, you're not, you can't do a multi-family other than an ADU.
Okay.
Okay. And the two-family, you can go up to four, but that is, um, a special land use, and you have to have the minimum lot area requirement.
Okay, okay. Thanks, thanks.
I got a question.
Yes, Commissioner Moore.
I have a question. Uh, and so I guess I'm asking the attorney, or I'm asking the, the two staffers. During public comment, a young, the young lady spoke about renters and stuff like that. Is that part of the commission's assignment to sort of clean it up? I heard her ask the question, or she said she bought it to meetings, and it was talked about, about having all of the renters' value going down and people not keeping their stuff up. Is that part of us? Because if it is, I'd like to make a motion that we at least look at it and let's talk about it.
Well, I, I think what she was discussing was a rental overlay ordinance, which we've looked into. I do have legal concerns with them, so we haven't brought that forward as, as something for review yet. That's something that can be, again, like the tiny house, homes issue, additional research could be done, and it could be looked into further in the future. But at this point, no, the, I, I think the zoning ordinance draft is, is where it's at.
Okay.
From, from staffs.
But I just didn't want her to walk away feeling like we did nothing.
Well.
We didn't entertain it, so I don't know if I make a motion that we entertain it, that we look into it, we continue to look into it, and keep this group updated on what we're doing.
They are concerned, just make the motion.
Right. I make a motion that the planning commission continue to look at the efforts and the concerns that were brought up tonight.
That's the questionable, was it marijuana overlay or what was that?
Rental overlay.
We ain't even talking about no marijuana.
Overlay.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it so we can get into discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second for, so we can go into discussion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, I'm not even sure how to address this, continue to look at issues brought forward tonight about a rental property overlay ordinance. Um, I'm, I'm gonna start the comment by, we don't generate an ordinance request out of this committee, and that sounds like.
Yes, we do. The zoning ordinance is an ordinance.
We can, we can. We didn't ask for that one.
No, we didn't.
It is the planning commission's duty.
To suggest ordinances? I've, I've seldom seen that we do.
So we just most recently adopted a short-term rental ordinance?
We adopted. Did we generate the request?
Yep, Bob wrote it. It was brought forward by staff, not the planning commission.
Right.
Right, that's true. Okay, that's true. That's a good point.
We, we look at ordinances that a lot of work has gone into to bring it to us. So, um, I'm, I'm just trying to find the practical effect of if we say this, what does it do?
We will come back with more information.
Okay.
About a rental restriction overlay. How that could work.
After you pass this ordinance.
I was just gonna say, it doesn't affect what we're working on right now.
Right.
So, could I, could I ask?
Commissioner Nash?
So could, we have a timeframe for you to bring that back to us? Is there a time, or is it just some time?
I didn't say a time. I didn't, you know, I wasn't in the motion.
We could probably give you pretty quickly at least what we've already looked into, because we have, Amy has looked into it a few different times. Um, so we could give you that by the next meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah. I would say the sooner the better.
And then, yeah, and then we'll have to continue to talk about what it would look like. Well, we would probably want to have at least two meetings to discuss what we'd want it to look like and.
So do I need to amend my motion because I like the way that sound? I don't want anybody to walk away not knowing, or feel like there was a waste, so if we can get the information that we've got on hand.
Starting point.
That is a start. It's a start. Not gonna say we can work miracles, but it's a start.
Commissioner Ostache, did you have a comment?
Yeah, the question I have, too, is when we talk about the rental overlay, does that include the concern for the ADUs?
No.
Is that part of it as well? Okay.
I do want to make clear the ADUs are only, to have an ADU, you, the owner needs to live on the premises, either in the ADU or the principal building. So ADUs are actually already covered in some sort of owner occupancy requirement.
Right, right.
If I may? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. It's also my understanding from prior conversations that the, the residents in the neighborhood of the Delaware Boulevard have some of the information that they would, could present as well. So, you know, if we're gonna look at it, let's look at it fully. But I'm, I'm fine with trying to get something to start with.
Yeah, just want to start.
Commissioner Weininger?
I've done lots of research into rental overlays and don't think that they're a good fit for Saginaw, especially in the economic situation that the city is in. And I would vote against spending time, staff time on this. Um, I don't think it's a useful thing to adopt in the city.
Other comment from commissioners, especially to my right, which somehow I seem to not turn that way as much. Uh, if there's no other comment, uh, we could vote on the motion to, what's the best way to put this? Explore and have staff bring back existing information on a rental property overlay?
I will continue to look into rental restriction overlays in neighborhoods.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Please.
Mr. Bland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Weininger?
Nay.
Commissioner Mellon?
Nay.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostache?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Excuse me?
The eyes have it.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I just didn't understand.
Thank you, staff. We'll look forward to the material you can bring us. Uh, I have no other items on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some more.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.